Good morning.
Keep your sink over there, yeah?
Well, it said hand sanitizer, that's terrible. Okay, it's the worst hand sanitizer.
I love it.
From a common account perspective.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting for August 6, 2024. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports from state and county officials, are there any state or county officials that would like to address the board or give us an update? Hearing none, limited public comment at this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes. It's gonna be a cooperative crowd this morning, I like that. Okay. Moving right along. Approval. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the July 16, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
So move Hatfield.
Support. Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the July 19, 2024 Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Move approval, Hatfield.
Support Campbell.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Campbell for approval of the July 19, 2024 Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. A little ahead of our schedule, Mr. Dull, but if you are ready, we are ready. Full faith and credit of the Meadow Lane Drainage District Bonds.
There's a hard copy, it's a whole lot easier for me. I'm not too computer literate.
You got extras?
Yeah.
There was a few more to pass down.
Got enough?
These are all, yeah, these are extra.
Okay, good.
Go.
Alright, Mr. Chairman. Back in 19, we got a petition for the Meadow Lane Drain, it's out there between, it's just off, it connects to Powell Road between Center and State Road. It's basically a development that was back in the 60s and they didn't do anything to do with their water, other than, there's a couple easements that say for county drainage, but it never got turned over to the county. Nowadays, they would have done a 433, the developer would have had to put all this stuff in, and it would, we wouldn't be dealing with this now. But, having said that, I've been out there a number of times in the rainstorms and seen water running across Meadow Lane, across Venture, into backyards, into drain fields. So Ken Clissow wanted a petition back in 19, he come back two hours later with all the signatures we needed. So, we've been moving forward since then. The full faith and credit, we went through our day review, we've had our compa costs, which is in front of ya. We got a total of 455 on the project. The township has already said they will prepay their, their percentage. So, we're at under 400,000 that we need to borrow. And basically, full faith and credit is to give us the opportunity to get a little bit of interest rate from the loaning institutions.
Okay. What township is that?
Hastings Charter.
Hastings Charter.
I went to their board meeting a month ago and said, on the Holmes Drain, it was 20%, on the Hastings Charter Township Drain, it was 21.2%. So, I said, we'll just set you guys at 20%, and they said, okay. We were off to the races, so.
So, on the 400,000 you're requesting, how many taxpayers are on the rolls?
Seventy-seven parcels.
Seventy-seven parcels?
Yep.
And out of those seventy-seven parcels, seventy-seven parcels, that's not necessarily property owners, that's just individual parcels?
Correct.
What was the percentage of people in agreement with the project?
We didn't, there was a few that thought maybe they shouldn't be in it, or their percentage, their cost should be lower. One of them was Steve Bolo, he said, well, I live a half a mile away, I don't get any benefit from this. And we tried to explain to him, with drainage, if you're dumping your water and it's coming down, you're still in the district. We did adjust his a little bit and Jim Newton's because we found some low spots there that dry up in the summer, so they do get a little better retention than what we originally had, so, or what we originally anticipated. We had 11 people come to the board, or day of review. Nobody, as far as I know, disagreed that it had to be done, they weren't happy with it, but, they are never happy with us, so.
Is there an assessment per homeowner listed on here?
I didn't bring, they, they vary anywhere from 2,600 to 5,200, I think. I didn't bring up the assessment rule, I can run down and get it if you want to see it, but it's really tiny. He's got a little tiny copy.
Roughly 22, 23, 102. The highest I see is just under 5,000, so, pretty equal around. But that's, that's the total assessment, and we'll be spreading this over,
Twenty years.
Over 20 years, so.
Alright, and you have talked to Hastings Charter Township, that's been through the board?
Yep, yep. Yeah, thank God, we, we had a scope meeting a year ago. We've gotten, so we like to do them scope meetings a year, year and a half in, when we got a rough plan, because Ray Hawes and different ones were actually flooded out in their backyards also. So, then we had to add that into the plan to make sure, because they said, well, that's great, you're drying up our front yard, but what about our backyards, where our drain fields are? So, once we got that done, they were pretty much on board.
Okay, and the request today is you're asking for full faith and credit for the Meadow Lane Drain, Drainage District Bonds. So, you're asking for full faith and credit of the county to back the bonds?
Correct.
Okay. This is where Doug comes in.
Yeah, not to exceed amount of 400,000, probably borrowing. Considering the township's name, we're looking at maybe 370, 375, something like that ultimately, but this is just, your resolution will be a not to exceed 400,000 if you choose to pass it.
Did they give you an idea on what interest rates are right now for this?
We sold one recently, well, the market is in a bit of a turmoil, so we can't predict, but we were at, we were under five, but I've seen them as high as six. So, it's really, it's not like the old days, it's, it's a little unpredictable. But I would suggest, maybe yesterday's events were good for interest rates, I don't know, we'll see.
Okay, questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Doster.
It looks like the resolution that you handed out just two minutes ago is different than the one that was in the packet, is that correct? What I'm looking at specifically, the one in the packet, it has a provision that I'm just, wasn't able to find exactly, in the second version, that if the project were to go over $400,000, that then that would be, there would be an additional assessment to the people of the MacArthur Drain District, which is a different drain, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know how you guys got that one, this is the one we believe we sent to Luella. That's why I like to bring a hard copy to make sure.
Oh, that looks entirely different than what we just, what I sent over. Well, we'll make sure you get the right one, because, was that number one? Yeah, mine says Meadow Lane, this is the one I sent over, right in the same place, so.
I think we should adjourn looking at this until we have a proper copy before, so I can read beforehand.
That is the proper copy.
I've never, Commissioner Doster, I've never seen that, what you have.
This is what was out of the packet.
I understand, yep.
Well, and that's why I like to bring up hard copies to know exactly what we got, what we're looking at.
I'm just, I'm just reviewing the copy in the packet for a second here.
Yeah, on the top of the second page.
This does say, the one I'm reading in the packet, Intra-County Drain referred to as the Meadow Lane Drain Project. And this is the packet I just pulled up, unless there was a different.
Yeah, can you look at the second page of it, as to who is responsible for any overage?
Yeah, Dave got it too.
This is what I emailed you, just print it off, I mean. This is what I emailed you.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I made a copy of, to make sure.
Yep.
That's interesting.
I, I would agree with Commissioner Doster, that I think seeing it in advance is important, if there's differences.
Is there, Michael, there's no issue if we bring this back next week under items for consideration for approval? Okay, there's not a motion on the floor for it right now, and we'd like to get the corrected copies to everybody on the board and in the packet, so, everybody can see the same thing, if that's okay. Doug, I apologize for bringing you in for something like this, this typically is not a very complicated process here, so.
No, I don't, I think, maybe I've said all I need to say, if we make that somehow route you the correct document. And for what it's worth, I did print this off, the email that I sent to the county, so.
Okay.
I don't know what happened.
We'll look at it in some more detail and figure that out, but, so, not to exceed 400,000, and the MacArthur Drain District does not pay for any overtures on this.
No, I don't think they'd be very happy about that, that would be some, a violation of something, I don't know.
Okay, well, if you would get us a corrected, either resolution or document for this, then we'll have this under items for consideration next week. Any other questions from Commissioners, why we have Doug here? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a good day.
Yes. Next up, Scott Korpak. From MSU Extension. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, great to be here as always.
In the rain.
In the rain. Yeah, so, the request before you is for withdrawal of funds from the Norris Tree Fund. I think it's pretty telling, you know, that in 1938, there was such foresight by members of this community to think about 4H and to continue it well into several decades later. And so, the trees have been harvested a few times, there hasn't been a draw for a number of years. But at this point, we are asking for a withdrawal to continue to provide our two full-time 4H program coordinators through the rest of the fiscal year, so that would be basically a year from now. We have funds in, based, because of the United Way and because of the county, but this would give us some margin in our account. And I think it also is a, a good kind of kick in the pants for us, because we need to do some management of that forest area. And so, that would also give us the opportunity to do so. So that, you know, 60, 70 years from now, when people are still sitting here, they'll look back and be grateful that we did what we were supposed to do.
Let's hope we're still not sitting here 60, 70 years from now, but you know, somebody will be. But, Scott, is this a $40,000 drawdown on this? It, it looks like we're expending pretty much all the funds in that account.
Yep.
Is this, is the plan to work on that forest project and revitalize that funding for future, or is this?
Yeah, oh yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, the property there, and there's, I think there's about 25 or 26 acres, had a chance to walk it this summer. And, and there are some trees that could be harvested, but you know, there is so many things that can be done, that need to be done, as far as additional planting of trees, and you know, I think that some of the things that we could do could be pretty creative, and maybe even provide some funds sooner.
Okay, when was the last draw taken out of there?
2017?
Okay, so it's been a little long.
I think so.
Okay, questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Doster.
This is the, the property that the, the county owns then in Yankee Springs Township, that the, the road splits the property, basically, into two parcels?
Yep.
And it was, it's a mature pine, it's almost all planted pine, is that correct?
Was, yes.
It was? Okay, and, so you're, you're asking for the, the funds, the funds have already accumulated in account, you're not asking for, to cut more trees at this point?
No, no, no.
Okay. Do, do you have a forestry plan of when, the next time that trees could be harvested, or?
Yeah, so, it, that is in process, and I do wish that I had a plan to provide for you, but I don't at this point. I would imagine that this fall I would, probably by October, November. By the chance we have a chance to, to work with our forestry management at MSU Extension. But getting them out here in, in the past couple months, they, they need a little bit more lead time. But, that will be, that will be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, we're gonna keep them busy with that spongy moss survey this October as well, so, we've got things going on for the forestry department.
Yes, we do.
Additional questions? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to withdraw $40,000 from the Norris Tree Account to assist in funding two current 4H program coordinators in Berry County.
Move.
Support.
Motion by Colton, support by Getty, to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to withdraw 40,000 from the Norris Tree Account to assist funding two current 4H program coordinators in Berry County. Additional discussion? Yes, sir.
Now, these ones we're funding, will they be full-time?
Oh yeah, yes.
Current positions?
Current.
Anything else, John?
That's it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And Scott, I saw also that you were gonna talk about the Dalton Kellogg Summer Garden and Nashville Garden Updates, love to hear about that.
And I so appreciate that, and I've got the clicker, so will that.
Is it on?
Yep. I have the touch.
My magic touch, too.
So, while that's getting to work, I really do appreciate it. I know that time is so valuable at your meetings, and the fact that you would allow me to have the opportunity to give you a quick update on some really good news, just is really fantastic. I think it's again representative of Berry County, and when you see the PowerPoint, I know it's in your packet, I really did want to stress the importance and the support from Berry County United Way, because they do fund basically a .5 of a 4H program coordinator. And then also, all of you as Commissioners, because you fund in total one FTE, and that's quite a commitment, and it's so much appreciated, and I wanted you to be able to see some of the benefit that you are, are getting. So, should I be doing something different with the? Usually my touch doesn't last quite that long.
There we go.
I'll do it.
It sounds like my wife, I'll do it. So, I always think it's great to see faces with the people that are in the community and doing the work. And Erin, and Lily, and Sydney have just been so instrumental. And again, trying to, to make sure that we give credit to Berry County and to United Way. And by the way, Berry County United Way, that's, that is, as far as I can tell, and I've done some looking, is the only United Way in the state of Michigan that supports 4H, which is pretty amazing. So, next slide. The Dalton Kellogg Summer School Garden, you know, there, I don't know if there's much else in life that you can look at with kids, with their hands getting dirty, and with vegetables and smiles on their face that can make it a better, a better picture. But, you know, those students, and there's, I think, close to 100 that are this year, have been learning about environmental stewardship and natural resource management, plant production and health. And those are things that, that, you know, we need kids to know. And, and really what it does, I believe, is it helps kids to learn, learn how to think. We can't tell kids what to think, we need to help them to learn to think, and gardening does that. Next slide. One thing to note here as well is the importance of partnerships. And so, you also notice that Activate Blue Zones for Berry County is on the slides as well, because it's been a partnership between community members and 4H and Activate Blue Zones in Berry County. And when you see people come together from the community to do something like this, it's really very rewarding, and you should all be very proud of that. And this was, was my quote, because it's Michigan State and, you know, it's Magic Johnson. But if we go another slide, you'll see Lily's quote, which is probably a little more academic. But, to plant a garden is to believe in tomorrow, which is very true. And this is the Nashville Community Garden, so, two gardens, the Dalton Kellogg Summer School Garden and now the Nashville Community Garden. This one is just this year, and was planned and planted, and I was there about two weeks ago, and it, and it's going, going really great guns. Next slide. So, it's a big garden, 80 by 30, there are 10 members from Nashville that are a part of this. Our own Lily Ariah went ahead and developed and designed the garden. And one of the things that's really been fantastic about this is that there's been produce that has been donated to the Maple Valley Community Center of Hope. And I think that that's another wonderful aspect of garden giving. So, I think there's one last slide here, and that's an invitation to all of you, because I thought that you might also want to see the Nashville Community Garden, there might even be some fresh vegetables for there, maybe some other food, but we're gonna be hosting an event there, just 45 minutes on September the 4th. I'll make sure that you have a more formal invitation as well, but would really love to have a chance for you to come and see it and to learn about the partnerships, hear from some of the Nashville community members from Activate Blue Zones, and from Lily and Erin and Sydney. I think that's my timer.
Perhaps. Questions from Commissioners? I know, Mike, you've been involved in, in the Nashville project.
Yeah, it's been great, it kind of, the idea really started because our, me and my neighbors have gardens, but the houses are so close together, the shade trees are so big. We either don't have space or don't have sun, so we've all been frustrated. And then we saw the Blue Zones presentation Catherine Getty gave in Nashville, and that kind of sparked the idea for a garden. The Village of Nashville was great, they gave us, not just a plot, but they gave us water, and they bring a garbage can, and they mow around it, you know, so, there's been, you know, several other partners. And then, people walking their dogs around their sites, two of our best volunteers were walking their dogs inside and really got involved. So, it's really been a great thing, and we actually produced enough produce to bring it to the food bank, which was nice, because the problem with food banks sometimes is there's a lot of packaged and canned things, but not fresh food. And, get some, people want fresh food. And so, we brought that, and, and so, it's really been a great experience, made new friends, met neighbors I didn't, just around the corner, but I didn't know them. And so, it's really been great. And we've been sharing recipes.
There you go.
I know Jenny made a jalapeno mango salsa with some of the jalapeno peppers, it was incredible.
There's quite a few zucchini, if you can believe that, so I think there might be some zucchini recipes needed, too.
Absolutely. Catherine?
I think it's just another fabulous example of the collaboration that we probably all experience in Berry County, no matter what we're working on. And, and this has just been one of those in tenfold, because it, it's brand new, right? I mean, it just started, you, you saw it was grass last year. And, and the fact that they're working with the library and doing the summer school program, I mean, that, that educational component wouldn't be, wouldn't be there without MSU Extension and the 4H coordinators, and just their energy that they bring to it. But then the community garden group, we have, we have people in their 20s probably, right, Mike? And then we have people in their 80s.
In their 80s, yeah.
And they're all working together to create this, and then to, to distribute it to the food bank. And I was there last week when we distributed at the food bank, and just, and, and we cut some sunflowers, and the volunteers were giving a sunflower to each of the women that came up to get their basket. I mean, it was, it, it literally brought tears to my eyes. I mean, to see that community impact for, for a grant that started with the community foundation, I mean, also another partner, it just, it, it's an amazing project. And, and Dalton's been going for a few years, and, and again, wouldn't be possible without MSU Extension being that educational partner with it, so.
Yeah, it, it really is, in my experience, and I cover four counties, are pretty remarkable. And it shows, I think, a lot about Berry County, and about the community that's here, and about how things don't happen by yourself, you have to work with others.
Additional comments or questions from Commissioners?
I got, I got one comment. I think, like, something like this project, then it might lead to, like, canning classes, because that's gonna become a lost art, too, right? I mean, I think a lot of people are, are interested in it, but they just don't know how to do it. So, and that garden will do nothing but grow over there, there in the Delta, so, great thing.
That is a lost art of canning. I remember watching the pressure cooker blow up in my kitchen, canning tomatoes one time, and learned a whole new language.
I have a question, maybe somebody can answer, why they call it canning if it's in a jar?
I'll, I'll make a plug, MSU Extension does a great job, they do some great food safety classes and webinars. I mean, just check out their, their, their Facebook page or their website.
We do teach canning, and this actually gives an opportunity for Sydney, who is our community nutritionist instructor, to actually use fresh vegetables to do canning and, and to make recipes when she's teaching her classes. So, I've taken a lot of time, but I'm really very grateful, so, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, appreciate it. Next up, Heather Wing. Good morning, Heather.
Good morning. See if we can get this without the ring. So, this morning I come to you as a very unpopular idea, especially during an election year. But, the farmland and the Conservation Easement Board felt very strongly about it based on the, the pressures that we're getting from the solar installations and other ideas for renewable energy that are gonna affect our farmland. So, I'm gonna read you the description, just because I think it was more eloquent than I can speak. This morning, it's been very hectic, but it's election day. "The Conservation Easement Board feels that it's prudent to request a millage for the funding of the operations of the Farmland and Open Space Ordinances. Now more than ever, as the state of Michigan has launched an attack on the rights of local governments to conduct their own planning and zoning, it's detrimental for Berry County to preserve its agricultural and open space heritage. Part of what makes Berry County unique is the split between agriculture and recreation. With agriculture being the second-leading industry in the county, it's detrimental that we prevent renewable energy installations from stealing excessive vital agricultural acres from production." acres from production. The protection of open space parcels is also highly important due to the ecological impact from renewable energy installations. Groundwater, flora, and our surface waters will be greatly impacted by solar installations. Migratory bird patterns will be disrupted by the installation of wind turbines. As we currently review the newly penned ordinance for solar energy installations in southern Berry County, the question begs, why were the ordinances for preservation not reviewed to better provide a guideline for what our community values in regard to land uses? We feel that there's not a better time to pursue a local millage for the operation of and funding for the preservation of farmland and open spaces. With renewable energy mandates targeting open space and farmland for installations, it's time for, time is of the essence to preserve the rural character of Berry County." I recently had to drive through Marshall Township. There was construction, we're on the way home from the orthodontist, and my gut turned with every turn. Mile after mile after mile of farmland full of solar panels, edge to edge in the fields, just for miles. It's gut-wrenching, it's disgusting. We have two ordinances that allow us the opportunity to let our landowners preserve their land forever. We just do not have local funding. The Carpenter Farm was up for the grant last spring, and they were declined because we do not have a local funding source, other than the landowner donating their development rights to Berry County. So, we ask the state to fund up to 50% of their development rights, and then we ask the landowner to donate the rest. The Carpenters qualified for some federal grant money, and that's really all they're getting besides their donation. The Butler Farm qualified for both federal funds and state funds and donated the remaining parcel or remaining amount of their development rights, because they felt strongly about this issue. Our farm, we did not qualify for the federal funding, and we certainly did not have local funding, but we donated more than 50% of our development rights because we felt strongly about preserving farmland. And I am very excited to tell you that there will never be a solar panel on any of the 434 acres that we own. And we are very close to that high-transmission power line. You'll never see a solar panel there, because we saw this coming, because we knew this was coming, and because we value our heritage. Yes, some of our parcels do have some open space on them, and they will be open space for the rest of eternity. There will never be a wind turbine, there will never be an oil well, there will never be a solar installation. There are better places for those. Go to Michigan State, every one of their parking lots is full of solar panels. They're above the parking lot, the cars are protected from the wind and the rain. They even heat their sidewalks with the energy that they draw from their solar panels. I mean, it's marvelous. On a recent road trip, there was, I went, drove past, I think it's called Next Here, it used to be Staganos Steering Gear back in the day. Their whole lot in front of their factory, between the factory and the highway, is solar panels, and it's edge to edge, there's no gaps in them, like some of the ones I see in the farm fields. Marvelous place to put a solar panel. On top of new buildings, on top of existing parking lots, it's all doable. But why are we raping our land and stealing our agricultural resources and stealing the open space that Berry County's known for? In my opinion, government gives us the fix when there's a problem, and we do have two standing ordinances that allow us to raise money via a millage to protect our farmland. This program is a voluntary program for our landowners. If they want to preserve, they can. They don't have to. But we do have thousands of acres preserved in Berry County through other resources. Southwest Land Conservancy has preserved more than 6,000 acres in Berry County, and we have all of the whole state game area that's really considered preserved, kinda. They can sell it if they figure it's excess. This would be a tool that we could use to fund, probably with the amount that we're asking for, probably fund two preservation projects a year. And I know it's not a very popular option, but it is an option to preserve our farmland and open spaces in Berry County.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners?
I have one. I just wanted to clarify, you know, because previously, when your farm was preserved, or maybe I misheard the discussion, but I thought it was said that if you have a preserved piece of land, that they could still move solar panels onto it.
PA 116 is called farmland preservation, and that's really a very short time span. You can put your land in PA 116 for 10 years to 100 years, but then you're done, you can't, there's no more PA 116. So, even with PA 116, you can still lease out your land, you can still put oil wells and things like that on it, but once that agreement is over, you can never go back into PA 116. And that's a very defined time period. The Conservation Easement that's on our farm is forever. It doesn't expire in 100 years, and you can never put solar panels or wind turbines or anything like that on it. You would be hard-pressed to get approval to put, like, a central pivot on it because of the water that it would draw from the ground. It's possible, because it does qualify under an agricultural, like, exemption, but not probable.
Okay, so I guess in my mind, okay, PA 116 is one thing, but when you preserve this land, that's another thing, and they can't do it there. I did see, on the way to Turkeyville, you know, just...
That's where I drove through last week.
I was driving from Battle Creek to Turkeyville to get a turkey sandwich, and I saw that, and it's horrible. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that was put together without any considerations that we're putting into our ordinance, which we'll be talking about next, but with screening and some different things, and the topography over there is fairly rolling, so there's not an opportunity to hide it. But, no, and I know we've had this conversation, because I was there when we established the Conservation Easement Board or changed it from what it was previously. I remember the conversation talking about, because the question was asked, are you going to go for a millage? And the answer was no, that that's not, because...
Not at that time, yeah. We had gone for a millage in, I want to say, 2006, and it was narrowly defeated. It was defeated by the farm owners. The people in Hastings and Middleville and the urban, more urban areas all voted for it. And it was the rural people that voted against it, because I think they didn't understand. And they are the ones that pay the big chunk of taxes. But it's that time. We're all offended by the thought of all of those acres in Johnstown Township being solar panels and the loss of the farmland. Somebody's got to feed you, and there's not very many of us left.
Yeah, and it's my opinion, I don't know that we're against farmland preservation. The thing that I'm not for at this point is we've got commission on aging today. We've got transit coming up. We've got the need for a jail that's got to be figured out, whether that needs a millage or not going forward, we've got to figure that out. There's a lot of very pressing needs in the county that we need to continue. And although I see this as one of those things that I can support in the future, the timing on this is not good, and with the millage fatigue in the county already with what it is, I just don't know that the timing is going to be good for this right now, in my opinion.
I totally agree. I'm not opposed to solar panels, I'm not opposed to wind turb, I'm not opposed to the renewable energy side, and I really don't like paying taxes any more than I absolutely have to. But this is a way for our county to, at least the citizens of our county, to get engaged in preserving their property. When I looked at other counties that do have this millage, Ingham County has had 1.14 millage since 2008. Their very first year, they raised over $1 million. And of course, they've had it now for 15 years, and they still have the same crew that's administering the project. We had looked at the numbers for 2022, and we thought that 1.4 was a great place to start, and then we considered making it even less to lower that fund. It's not a huge tax by any means, but it is a tax. And I get that it's an unpopular thing, I just think that it's an important thing for us to look at and to be considering, if not now, for the future. I was charged by my board to bring it. I did not want to, I did not want it to have a negative impact on anyone's election day. I just know that it had to be done now, and if not now, we will consider it again in the future, and we will keep trying. That's their board stance. We feel that strongly. We fought for 20 years to keep this board active and to get it fixed so that it could preserve property, and this would be a tool for more people to get their parcels preserved.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I do also serve on the Conservation Board, which is very, very minimally funded right now. I don't even know how they exist with what funding they get. But as far as the impact, we are so popular for, known for our agriculture, our rural way of life in Berry County, that somewhere, somehow along the line, we have to figure out a way to support the conservation, because it will be gone, and then we'll say why. You know, this seems to be the one and only weapon that we have left that is protected, that is secure, and just like Heather said, it gives her a great feeling of satisfaction, knowing that that family farm will always be a family farm and identity to Berry County. So, I agree, the timing could probably not be worse, but something, somewhere has to be done, and taking note of that this is an important thing. How they exist on the poultry budget that they have is, it's amazing that they've been able to do what they've done. So, I agree, Dave, timing's very poor. You know, we got this jail that's been kicked and kicked and kicked down the road for whatever reason, and I really feel like this is the board that's going to get that project done. And I also feel it's a board that's going to realize the importance of this millage that's trying to get approval now, but for sure needs to get approval somewhere in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield?
Two questions, excuse me, two questions. You said that you thought this would provide enough funding to preserve two farms. How many acres are you anticipating?
It just depends, the way that this is worded, it would operate both the ag preservation and the open space preservation. So, the state provides grant funding for part of the ag preservation, that's what, all the documents and stuff back and forth, because we have to apply to the state process for the grant. But I've been told by the powers that be that there are grant opportunities through the DNR to preserve open spaces as well, as long as there's matching funds and not just necessarily donations. So, in my mind, I would see at least, at least one from each of the two preservation projects a year, if not more. So, smaller parcels with ag preservation, the limit is 40 acres. That's the smallest parcel that we can preserve. You could probably do two or three small farms that way. Larger farms, you're going to run out of funds really fast. So, like, my farm probably would have taken out of, if you looked at half of the amount of this grant, it says 425,000. If you budget down to 400, it would have taken 200,000, and it would have taken at least half of what was for the year. The bigger the parcel, the more it costs, and you can do a lot of smaller parcels instead of bigger parcels. It all depends on how they score. Every one of the funding cycles that we do, the applications are scored, just like a test score, and you pick the highest ones to submit for the application. I'm not sure how the DNR applications work, because I haven't had the opportunity to work with them yet, but I'm pretty sure they have the same type of setup where everything is scored in order to get the grant funding.
And then secondly, and I don't know who wrote it and what other uses it may be put into, but I think on the description of action that is in front of us, in the fourth line and the sixth line down, the word detrimental is used, and I don't think that's the word you want.
Okay.
Because, yeah, yeah.
Comparative, maybe, or something?
It's not detrimental to preserve, it would be beneficial to preserve. And it's not detrimental that we protect, it would be, yeah, again, you want a positive term, not a negative term.
Thank you.
Good?
Good.
Commissioner Smelker? You're a known farmer, would you like to add anything to this discussion at this point?
The only thing I can add is that I am not for added taxes. And if I remember right, I voted against farmland preservation years ago, so.
Okay. Other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Doster?
I guess I would agree that there's a particular millage fatigue going on right now and about to remain so probably. Prairieville Township just voted, and they have roads, millage, police, millage, fire millage as well.
I get it, I completely understand.
And, I mean, I support farmland preservation. My family farmed here since the 1830s. I don't, and the other thing is that this would affect so small a portion of the, if there's a way to target areas that are specifically under threat.
We have looked at, we had, we asked in the master planning process to have an agricultural district designated, which would have probably been in, like, the Woodland Township area, because that is almost, almost all farmable, tillable land. And those requests were denied. But we do have pockets in the county that have been preserved, and it would be the goal, as said in the ordinances, to target that stuff that is already preserved and start adding stuff around it to make bigger pockets of preserved property. The two parcels that we have in Maple Grove and Northern Assyria Township are contiguous. So, the Carpenters were preserving over 200 acres, no, the Carpenters had 400 acres-ish, and the Butlers had 200 acres-ish, so now you have 600 acres of preservation. Our farm is contiguous to a 200-acre preservation project from Southwest Land Conservancy, so now you have over 600 acres in Southern Assyria Township that are conserved. And those are the target areas. Do I really want to conserve something that is right on the village limits of Middleville? Probably not, because that's where they're going to want to grow. But if we can preserve other larger parcels, George Colors had his property preserved a few years ago, and because we didn't have a tool to accept a donation, he preserved them through the Michigan Farmland Preservation at the state. But his land is contiguous to Pierce Cedar Creek Institute, and now you have this really, really large tract of land that is permanently preserved. So, it's not that we're just, you know, picking and choosing, we're looking at areas that are prime for these pockets. Like, the farmland in Southern Johnstown Township is not that far from Pierce Cedar Creek. It is not that far from some of the parcels that are preserved by Southwest Land Conservancy. It's right there. It's right on the edges of places that are already taken care of, and we just need to make sure that the rest of the landowners have the opportunity to do the same thing.
I'd like to see...
I get it, it's not a great time to ask for tax money.
And I was wondering if there's a way to show more broad support or something. I mean, there are other agencies that have an interest...
There are.
...in something like this. If they were to all, you know, get behind this as a, you know, as something that is important that we do, that might be helpful as well.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Tuneson?
Yeah, I'm 100% behind farmland preservation. You know, only myself, I'd hate to see ever have solar panels on it. But I can't, at this time, support putting this on the taxpayers. So, I mean, you're right. We have a lot of other projects that we need to address right now.
And Heather, you're just a fantastic spokesperson for the farmland preservation. Since I've known you, being a former commissioner and the stuff that you've done, that you're the right person to lead this charge. It's just, we've had this discussion, and you know my concerns going forward. I'm not against this, I'm just against it at the moment.
I get it.
So I think this is going to go forward at some point. I just, for me, not right now.
So as the chair of the farmland preservation board, I'm charged with doing what my board asks me to do, but I'm not opposed to a millage for this. Our goal is to bring it back. Our long-term goal was to see a millage in 2026, and we felt now is a time to start talking about this with all of the talk we have about solar installations and stuff so that we at least get it on the radar. So I appreciate your time today, and I have a job to finish. I'll be back sometime tonight.
Yeah, sometime, wait. Hopefully not in the wee hours.
Hopefully, it's just still this evening, not tomorrow morning.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak briefly?
Yes.
I just want everybody also to know, as far as Heather, I'm telling you, there is a lot of paperwork and running down and chasing things in this business of preserving land. I can't even begin to tell you I understand it all. But Heather has continued to do this free of charge because of our money situation. So in the future, when we're looking at it, we've got to take that into consideration, that a program like that just doesn't happen. You don't just say, "I want it," and it's done. It is endless, endless hours, and she's the one that's been shouldering it. So I just wanted that known.
Thanks.
Not a motion on the floor at this point to recommend this to the Board of Commissioners. Are we agreeing by consensus that maybe the timing on this, that we like this, but the timing is not right for this? Somebody wants to make the motion, we can have a vote on it, but I think at this point, based on the input, that it's probably better to come back for another time. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. You okay, John? Jim McManus.
Our wonderful solar energy ordinance. Thank you.
Just a full ordinance right there.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. After Heather's comments, I was kind of hoping there might be somebody in between. Skip to the solar and jump into it. The... But inevitably, we do have to address the elephant in the room, and we've been doing this. So presented to you today is the amended draft of the solar energy ordinance. Within the draft, this is exactly as submitted to you previously with one change. Under the public safety provision, we did add a provision for equipment, if necessary, purchase that would be paid for by the applicant to the local jurisdiction.
That's page nine of your...
So nine, subsection zero. What I passed out to you was from Consumers Energy, an email that we received with suggested language under the same provisions. Our attorney, Brad Fowler, produced the ordinance. The language is extremely similar. I don't think we need to make any adjustments to our language, but we thank consumers for their input. So the process is, the Planning Commission held a public hearing last month. We did have some comments, and again, the majority of the comment dealt with the equipment. But overall, the comments were fairly light. The minutes of that meeting is included in your seminal. You then need to approve these text amendments as a board, and then they become official after that. So that's why we're here today.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Appreciate your effort on this, Jim. It's been a... Seems like it's been a long process, but it's been a compact process, once we really got the wheels going underneath this. So it's...
We did it the right way. Education first, and then collaboration. And then I think we came up with an ordinance, and I think that the ordinance achieves the objective of being restrictive enough that we'll have an ability to be able to deny requests that don't meet our requirements. And we work with consumers so that the first project that's going to come in has stronger standards than the state requirements and that they're willing to work with. So we hope that that will continue.
Well, that was our goal, is the CRIOs, the compatible renewable energy ordinances, I just do not think were acceptable based on what the feedback was from Berry County residents, that we wanted something stricter, tighter, a little more controlling. And I think we've accomplished that through this ordinance. I think in the planning and zoning meeting that took place last month, it was well-attended, but still not a lot of arguments, a lot of debate on it. I think that people had accepted it. A few questions, but for the most part, it was well-received throughout. I don't know if you want to add anything else to that, David?
Just very briefly, and I think Jim's last comments reflected the fact that we followed the right procedure in getting to this point. We had good involvement by a number of interested parties. We listened to what they had to say. I think they listened to what we had to say, and, you know, we came up with an ordinance that it certainly isn't perfect in anyone's eyes, but it's a great compromise. And, you know, I compliment Jim and everyone else that was involved in the process and how this was done. It's a great example of it's worth taking the time to do it right and get the input that we need in order to do the right thing.
Well, the citizen-led group from Kelly Case was a good start. All the input from Johnstown Township through their special meetings and just other planning and zoning with the attorney, it just took a while to shape it. Consumers input, working with them, it was really a good process where all stakeholders were involved. And like I said, although to the point you made, there's no victory in surrendering 1,100 acres of farmland, you know. However, I think we've got a good process going forward for this, so.
Commissioner Doster?
Do you foresee the need for specialized fire equipment? What would that be?
Well, I don't know. The consumers in their email did not believe that there would be a need for this project. The only comparable that I can give you is when we did the ethanol plant, there was a specialized foam that was required that they had to provide the township for fire prevention. So as the project continues, you know, if there is something that's required, and I would think it would be primarily for like the plant itself, not necessarily for the solar panels in the fields, then we'll have to look into that. But they don't anticipate it, and I don't anticipate it.
And is there some sort of mechanism to actually make them purchase this?
Yeah, so the ordinance requires that the local fire department review, and if there's any specific requirements and there's onsite training that's required as well, then they would have the ability to ask and receive that equipment.
And if they didn't comply, then their permit would be revoked?
Or at least, because some of that review would take place in advance, that might be withheld.
And there's no onsite battery storage for the consumers project? That has been the topic of discussion for the most part, so the incidence of fire is extremely limited, so.
But that's, you know, we're trying to be somewhat visionary in what we do. When we look at the project that's specifically going to be net, you know, first before us, probably not a significant issue of any issue at all. But you don't know what the next one's going to look like or the one after that. So we tried to at least build some safeguards in there, and that made, yeah, some of the parties to the process more comfortable.
And I'll say one other thing, since Heather was just here, is that there is a provision in here that the prime farmland protection is put into place, that there's a capacity limit on how much farmland, prime farmland, you can use to have an application accepted. And within the master plan, we've defined some of these areas, and we've defined the agricultural areas as well, so that when these requests come forward, we'll actually have a place to evaluate whether or not it's compatible with all the county's goals.
Awesome. Additional questions? Hearing none. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the proposed solar energy system text amendment A-3-24.
So move, Doster.
Support, Hatfield.
Motion by Doster, support by Hatfield to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval of the proposed solar energy systems text amendment A-3-24. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Like I said, it's been quite a process.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience in working through this.
Okay. At this point, we are going to take about a seven to 10-minute break or recess, and we'll be right back.
Michael up here.
Oops. The board will come back in session. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. Ready?
We are ready.
All right. Um, this is, uh, I think a pretty straightforward. It's to recommend of the board of commissioners approval to remove Craig Stoltenberg, who's the village manager for, um, the village of Middleville, um, effective May eighth, 2024, and appoint Douglas Powers, who is the planning director, planning and zoning director, um, for the village of Middleville to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term, uh, that began, uh, January one of 2023 and ends on December thirty-one of 2025.
Okay. Fairly simple request. We've done some of this in the past before.
Correct.
Any questions for Michael on this? It's pretty straightforward. Commissioner Doster.
What, uh, um, what was the reason for the removal of Craig or?
It, it, it's, I think of when, uh, removal sounds sort of harsh, punitive, punitive, and, and maybe replacement, uh, and I don't know that without some context, I appreciate you asking that there is a term that doesn't leave with some, some level of, of harshness, if you may. That's not the case here. Um, Craig had, uh, um, served on it, um, prior to Doug Powers, um, if I remember being in, coming onboard with the village. And when Doug did, um, it made more sense for Doug with his background. So Craig had, had asked for Doug to be, to replace him on that board.
Okay. So in effect, he's resigning from the position.
He, he is, and, and asking and requesting that Doug Powers, who is, um, effectively more qualified in that space, if you may, um, to, um, and with, with regard to what that board does, um, to serve on it.
Okay.
So good question. I'm glad you followed up with that.
Just one question on the dates. Why are we backdating that, uh, instead of making it effective as of Craig's resignation?
The... So it says here in the bottom, um, on May eighth, the Brownfield approved the request to replace Craig with Doug. Um...
So he's filling a term that expires at the end of 2025?
He is. Um, and I'm trying to recall if, if... I don't, uh, Dave, I'll try to get an answer to, a better answer to that.
Okay. It normally just seems to me that, you know, we're transitioning from one to the other. So Craig has been in place up until the date of his resignation and now we're going forward to be actually effective with whatever date the, the board.
Yeah, I will find out. See if I can clarify that.
If we can just clarify that before we finalize this next week.
Okay. Additional questions?
Basically, he's just filling out his term, right? That's all he's doing, right?
Yep.
Doug is, uh, is exceptionally qualified for this role.
I have no question about, I have no, no issue with what's being done. I just want to make sure we get the dates right. So the workover here, if you guys would do something. Right.
Okay. With that, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners approval to remove Craig Stoltenberg effective May eighth, 2024, and appoint Douglas Powers to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term that begin on January first, 2023, and ends December thirty-first, 2025.
So moved.
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Getty, support by Campbell, Campbell to recommend of the board of commissioners approval to remove Craig Stoltenberg effective May eighth, 2024, and appoint Douglas Powers to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term that begin January first, 2023, and ends December thirty-first, 2025. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Um, next on your agenda, employment agreement for county administrator between the county of Berry and Eric Zuzga. You've got a chance to review it. Um, I spent some time on the phone with, uh, Dave Stoker, our attorney. Um, Eric had a chance to review this in detail, came back with a few questions, um, and a few amendments. We went back and forth with the attorney. The attorney didn't see any issues with those revisions to the contract, which were minor, um, two-thirds vote versus majority on a few things, um, totally in line with it. So, um, we've got an agreement in place. Any questions, any concerns on behalf of the board? Eric was obviously concerned. Uh, we were going back and forth on this and he had put in his resignation with his board already, which is always concerning when you don't have a contract, but yet, um, you're hoping that we can make this all work. So, but, um, and he apologizes. He wanted to be here today to answer any questions as well, but he had a couple of meetings to wrap up as he's trying to kind of consolidate his last week or so in there and hopefully be started in here at some point in the next, uh, 10 days, I believe, uh, late August. So.
So he, uh... If we go forward with this, then it would become final next week then, when we vote on it again, is that...
Correct.
And it would be, his employment would start at the end of the year or at the end of the month?
I think we have it for August 26th, slated for August 26th in the contract. But we hadn't got signatures on it yet pending approval or any changes or potential amendments that the board wanted, but... But it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I read through it. I, I was, I didn't see a problem with anything I read through there.
Yeah. Ryan from Gov HR also, I think some of you've got that email that he came back and, um, when you select a candidate, they go in and all, they also do a deep dive into the references, background, history, all kinds of stuff. And, and, uh, he came back with no issues at all and was happy with the outcome of it. My conversations with Eric and other people in the community also are coming back that he is, he is well-known and respected in his peer group. So... I don't see any issues. If there are no questions, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the employment agreement between Berry County, uh, with Eric Zuzga.
So moved. Hatfield?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty to recommend of the board of commissioners approval of the attached deployment contract for Berry County Administrator, including exhibits between county and bearing and Eric F. Zuzenga, effective August 26th, 2024 through August 25th, 2025. Additional discussion?
I guess, um, one question. So will we review? Will it be like a, a yearly review? As what I was reading?
Typical, uh, that, that is in there that we can do an annual review. Um, but typically these contracts are done for three years, but by statute, because we're so close to the end of the term of this board, uh, we can't commit future boards to contracts over one year. So after the first of the year, uh, we'll have the opportunity to review this and potentially go with a three-year contract as well. So.
Okay.
Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Limited public comment at this time. Any, any, uh, member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
I know, let's say, normal public comment. Or normally, we don't come up, uh, during public comment. I want to thank Mr.
Normal or just not in the same line, so, but.
I want to thank Mr. Doster for catching that grammatical error in there. I checked with Luella and for whatever reason, instead of cutting and pasting what we sent them, they cut and pasted and took half of MacArthur that we did six months ago. Don't know how that happens, but, uh, it wasn't anything that we sent to them because I thought maybe we made a mistake, but we didn't. So just wanted to clarify.
We will get it corrected and back on items for consideration next week.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Additional public comment? Really? You guys are going to be that easy today?
Nope.
Couldn't be that easy. All right.
Maybe if my wife could have cuffed me to the chair. Uh, Joel Libbison, Rutland Township. Reflections on running for sheriff. I've done my best to make sure that my campaign sticks to policy and action, objective proof, objective truth. And I am happy to say I've done that. I wish I had more time to do more campaigning, wish I had a war chest of money, but then neither of those two happens. But I, I can go to sleep tonight knowing, uh, just fine. In fact, I'll probably go to sleep at eight o'clock and wake up and find out what happened in the morning. Um, it, in results to, uh, yeah, uh, in, in response to, uh, uh, oh man, my mind just went completely blank. There's three things I can never remember. Four.
Thank you, Joel. Good luck today. Additional public comment? Okay. Commissioner comments?
Hi, I'm Rochelle Spencer. Um, I am running for sheriff in Berry County. A lot of you, can you hear me?
Sit down.
Oh, you want me to get right at it? All right there, Mr. Doster. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Rochelle Spencer, I'm running for sheriff in Berry County. Most of you I know or have met. Um, so I'm here today, uh, had an agenda change. I'm just going to read. Normally, I like to just kind of wing it, but, um, I got a time limit here and I've already used, uh, 20% of it or better. So, um, basically, I'm here to ask you guys that no matter what happens with the election, that at a certain point, like when we, when we fail to do things, right? When we fail to take action, when we see things that are happening, Michael, that are wrong, if we don't do anything, we're complacent, right? Aren't we the same? Like, we're, we're, we're helping it happen. So when we have, um, people who are in office who make bad choices, um, that's, that's difficult. And I know it's difficult for this board because you guys don't make that choice, right? The people make the choice and that's a good thing. We like that. But, um, meanwhile, you're really limited in what you can and can't do, but there have been times. And, and I don't know, um, necessarily that we need to get into all that because we don't have time. Um, but we need to start holding people accountable when, um, they do things that are wrong, when they do things that are unsavory, and especially when they're in law enforcement. There is a higher standard for us. And I think that most people feel like there is a higher standard for law enforcement. That's a good thing. Um... If we don't do that, like where are we? This is Berry County. We all live here. We all love this. Every one of you are sitting on this board because you love this county. You wouldn't be if you didn't. Like, you wouldn't deal with the stuff you deal with, the crazy phone calls you get, the negativity. You, you wouldn't do this if, if, if you didn't believe in what you were doing. So I wish you all luck in your elections, um, for those of you that are running for reelection. That said, um, it's been very interesting. I reached out to our county administrator because I was having issues with the sheriff. Uh, I see I have a minute left, so no worry. I, I, I will be done, but my wife will finish it. Um, and I wanted to let him know that, what the sheriff was doing to me in terms of, you know, not, not to me, to my wife, because I'm really tough. Like, I'm kind of a bad, excuse me, B-I-T-C-H. I, I, I've been in law enforcement for 24 years. I deal with bad guys doing bad guy stuff on the felony level. I've been undercover. I've, I've done a million different things in my career, more than any guy that works at the sheriff's office. And, you know, us women were just not tough as the guys, right? Well, I am. I've done more than all the guys, guys. Um, but, but here's the thing, when you mess with my family, you're going to see the softness. You're going to see the hurt. And Michael, I tried to reach out to you and you did not respond back to me and shame on you for that. My wife is hurting over all this crap that the sheriff is doing. And everybody's going to go, oh, she's a girl, she's emotional, she sat up there crying. Damn right I am, because the sheriff is attacking my family and he's attacked my wife and my family is affected by this and it's bullcrap. It's bullcrap, you guys. And if you guys don't stand up and do something, I don't know what to tell you. I don't know what to tell you. You're as bad as he is. And Janice is going to finish because I'm done with my time. This is me notifying you guys, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm a little dramatic here. But this is me notifying the board, notifying the board and you, Michael, even though you wouldn't take my meeting, that this is a hostile work environment, that the sheriff has affected me, he's affected my family. And I'm going to tell you one thing, guys. If I don't win this election, no one at the sheriff's office is safe. Eighty percent of that department has supported me and he is coming after them. And he has told people that will testify that he is coming after them. Rosa Grady put a sign in her yard.
Okay. That's not, not for here.
Rosa Grady put a sign in her yard and he's going to take away her take-home car. And there's about 20 other deputies that he's promised attacks against. But we're going to, we're going to defend the sheriff. We'll, we'll protect him. That's cool.
We didn't say that.
Yeah, you kind of did. But that's what's been happening all along.
Is there additional public comment?
There is. There is. If you could be polite enough to give her a second, could you do that?
Sure.
Thank you. After all, we put up a lot from the sheriff over the years, so we could, we could just do this for 30 seconds with me.
Good morning. I'm Janice Couchman, Berry Township. I see that the sheriff, who has ultimate control over what is released from his office, has decided to release handwritten notes from an investigation he ordered to happen in the first place. This was all orchestrated by him in the first place. There is no complainant. He ordered his undersheriff to go interview people in order to gather what he thought would further his campaign. He had to order his undersheriff to do it because the prosecutor, Michigan Sheriff's Association, and Michigan State Police refused to investigate this because it was being brought forward by Darlief and no one else. This is an abuse of power like none other. I have not publicly addressed this issue because it involves a private matter between two families and it's disappointing if the truth was not told during the conversation the undersheriff had. The notes do not accurately depict the situation and are even adulterated by Darlief himself, as you can see by his handwriting on the notes, as well as undersheriff Sixberry's. It is unknown even to me whose false words are memorialized, but they are far from the whole truth. We may never know because the undersheriff was placed on leave for his actions that actually were investigated by the Michigan State Police. Darlief knows this situation is not criminal and he knows no one involved wanted this investigated. investigated, much less leaked. But here we are, Darleef is desperate to undermine me, because he knows he is a failure. He has resorted to dirty politics, has resorted to abusing his position, to try and bring charges against me, simply because he fears me. That is the very things our forefathers fought against. Tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tunison.
I'm good, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
I have a little bit to say. Thank you. I had a meeting last night in Assyria. I had something jotted down, and I, I just wanted to present it here today also. Most of everyone's attention currently is in the voting process, which is going on as we speak. Many have already voted, and many more will continue to vote today. I'll complete my fourth year as of January 1 as a District 7 Commissioner. I've learned much about our county and how it works. This has been a good experience. However, there are some drawbacks that are discouraging, to say the least. We do have persons, some in leadership positions, that seem to enjoy spreading untruths in the attempt to steal some votes. My position has and always will be to not get dragged into that kind of campaign. So as you go to the polls today, for those who have yet to vote, try to look for the smoke screens and pick those that you wish to continue leading our townships, county, and state. And one thing I'd like to add, I spent some time in a very, very bad place. And I'll tell you one thing about that bad place. There wasn't a Democrat, there wasn't a Republican, and there wasn't an independent. We were all just Americans. Please keep that thought.
Well said. Vice Chair Hatfield. Commissioner Smelker.
Here, here.
Commissioner Getty.
Nothing.
Commissioner Colton.
Speechless.
Commissioner Doster.
I just wanted to mention my, I don't know if you're aware, my older brother passed away this last week. George Scott Doster. He was one of a, a line of Georges in my family. The, the oldest son had been named, his son is named George, and his grandson was named George, and his father was George, and his grandfather was George, and his great-grandfather was George. And he was born and raised in Berry County, and he was a very productive farmer for many, many years in Berry County. He died from diabetes that they presume was a, influenced or caused by his exposure to Agent Orange in Vietnam. He was a crew chief on a Chinook helicopter there, the 242 Mule Skinners, was famous for extricating large loads out of very hairy situations. And he was a good guy and a hero. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to hear about that. Couple notes. This weekend is Founder's Festival in Dalton. I have not been, I have not heard yet if Bruce is going to be there with the horse, horses this year? Your horses have passed? Okay, the time is gone. I know it's been a lot of time. Okay. All right. Normally, I would have cowplop tickets to offer you all, but I am completely sold out, so, heartbroken as it may seem, you're going to have to find another source to get cowplop tickets or the day of, but that'll be on Saturday of Founder's Festival. And just as a closing note, my appreciation to you as a board for your time invested and extra meetings invested last month and all your research for looking through a long list of candidates for county administration. That is something that hasn't happened by any board in this county for 30 years. It was a long process. I think we've all come together and made a great decision on that, though. It was an interesting process at times, I will, I will tell you that. And the other thing is solar, that we were handed some bad cards, and we had to figure out how to play them, and I think collectively, listening to the community, putting our minds together, working with local stakeholders, I think we've come up with a good process. Not to say that that may need to change or evolve in the future, but right now, we've got a good process to start with. So, like I said, there's, I don't see it as a win when we're losing 1,100 acres of farmland, but by the same token, this is what the state is directing us to do. We know it's coming, so the best we can do is try to put some bumpers up on the bowling alley and keep the ball rolling down the middle and protect as much as we can. So anyways, I appreciate Greg Moore for his cooperation with us and all of you for your input in that process as well. It's been a long process, so anyways, thank you for braving our weather today. Thanks, Scott Korpak, for your information as well from, you know, MSU, so we appreciate all that. So everybody have a great day, and we will talk to you next week. And good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, they pile up, you know, my mother was, they pile up. My mother wasn't all that long ago.
Yeah. How many children do you have?
There's six of these.
Six, yeah.